To begin by giving board members the opportunity to introduce themselves, beginning on my right with Member Christensen.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Lauren Christensen. Glad to have you here.
Hi, I'm Patrick Keough. Thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening, Anupam Chuksedu. Thanks for being here.
Patty McCoyn, thank you for being here. I'm very excited.
Hi, I'm Doug Brooks. Thanks for coming out.
Good evening, Sean Wilson.
All right, I'd like to ask the members of my core team to introduce themselves to you. First, I'd like to introduce Ms. Diane Robertson, my assistant. I want to thank Diane for always being here, taking our minutes and keeping us all on track. We appreciate you, Diane. Mr. Brandon.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing. Welcome, everybody.
Kurt Tiskowitz, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Hi, I'm Debbie Piaz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening, Beth Rail, Chief Academic Officer. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Shante Langford, Chief Human Resource Officer. Welcome.
So, it's a good evening. I'm Liz Vartanian-Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent. Welcome.
All right, thank you. I just want to remind all in the audience, if you have a citizen's comment, please make sure that you put that in the basket here at the start of the meeting if you'd like to give a comment later on in the agenda. As we move into this portion of the meeting, I first like to begin by offering thank you and gratitude and appreciation to our former President McCoyn for two years of really leading this board through a very, very, just a challenging time for our entire district, our local area, our nation, our world through COVID. And I know through this seat, all of us, you're forced to just absorb a lot as people are just navigating different decisions, and we can never make a decision that will satisfy all, but just appreciate your dedication and your leadership throughout the couple of years, and you have earned the right to exhale. And so just want to say thank you for that leadership. Now I am ready to move into the office of the President. But, but first. First, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. So I'd like to ask one of our students who wants to be a volunteer to lead us in the pledge. Alex, it's you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will hurry up and assume my role. Clearly, I'm not as organized. So let's go back to the adoption of the agenda. So I'd like to invite a motion for the adoption of the agenda for the organizational meeting. Is there a motion?
Madam Superintendent, I move that we adopt the organizational meeting agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Perfect. Those in favor, sign by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. The agenda for the organizational meeting will be adopted as presented. I would now like to invite a motion for the nomination of the President of the Board of Education for the 2022-23 school year. As a reminder, there is no need for a second when you're dealing with nominations. So are there?
Oh, sorry. Dr. Merritt, I would like to nominate Sean Wilson for President of the School Board.
All right. Are there any other nominations for the office of the President? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. Those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, six, zero. President Wilson, please come and assume. Congratulations, President Wilson.
First and foremost, I just want to thank everyone for your confidence, for your trust. Looking forward to continuing to be a part of the board and to help lead the board in the 2022-2023 school year. So thank you very much. And Dr. Merritt, you did an outstanding job. You really did, yeah. So thank you for that.
I should have stayed on script.
So we're going to now continue with the election of officers. First and foremost, Vice President, is there a motion for the nomination for Vice President for the 2022-2023 school year?
Mr. Wilson, I would like to nominate Liranda Chastain for Vice President.
All right. Are there any other nominations for Vice President? All right. With no other nominations, then I'll call for a vote. All in favor, all in favor of Member Chastain for Vice President, say yes.
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 Those opposed, say no. All right, motion passes, six, zero. It goes to show you, when you don't come on time, you become Vice President of the school board.
All in toll.
That's how it goes. That's how it goes. And then on to Secretary. Are there any, is there a motion for the nomination for Secretary for 2022-2023 school year?
I would like to nominate Anupam Chuksedu for the position of Secretary.
Are there any other nominations? Great. All in favor of Members Chuksedu as a Secretary, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes, six, zero. And then finally Treasurer. Are there any nominations for, is there a motion for a nomination for Treasurer?
Mr. President, I nominate Patrick Keough for the Office of Treasurer.
Any other, any other nominations? Barring none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say yes.
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 Any opposed, say no.
Do, do I have a choice?
No.
No, sorry.
All right, so that's our slate of officers for 2022-2023 school year. You guys give it up. Make a little noise. At this time, just want to see if any of the officers would like to make any comments.
Looking forward to your presidency, Mr. Wilson.
I'd like to thank Ms. McCoyn for, for all the incredible hard work that she did carrying us through the pandemic and for this, the leadership that she showed this process, especially in creating the new board goals and the dynamic plan. And I look forward to the continued presence and participation in this board going forward.
Yes, well said.
And also I wanted to thank Mr. Brooks for all his hard work as a secretary, because I think he's done this for almost five years now or something like that.
Well, I think Secretary was just three years.
Three years.
Three years, okay. But thank you for, for, for all your hard work on that process, Doug.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And I would like to echo that. I think the slate of officers that have served over the last two years or during, you know, some of the most difficult times that, that you could be on a school board. So definitely want to recognize your hard work and, and your leadership during that time. All right, so now we're on to continue organizational meeting business. First up is the bylaws. So is there a motion to adopt bylaws number 0164.1 and 0164.2, time, place, and notification of meetings?
Mr. President, I move that we adopt bylaws numbers 161, 16, I'm sorry, 164.1 and 164.2, time and place and notifications of meetings.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do you mind, Member Keough, reading the bylaws for consideration?
It was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member. Christensen, sorry, I've been away for a little bit, to adopt the following bylaws. Bylaws number 164.1, regular meetings, time, place, and notification. Regular meetings of the Board of Education of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools, Wayne and Washtenaw Counties, Michigan, shall be held on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month, except there will only be one meeting in July, July 19th, and one meeting in December, December 13th, beginning at 7:00 PM at the following location, except as agreed herein, unless otherwise directed by a majority vote of the members. Location is EJ McLendon Educational Center, 454 South Harvey Street, Plymouth, Michigan, 48170. Bylaw number 164.2, special meetings, time, place, and notification. Special meetings of the Board of Education of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools, Wayne and Washtenaw Counties, Michigan, may be called by the President of the Board or any two members thereof by serving on the other members a written notice of the day, time, and place of such special meetings, or by the majority vote of the Board. Public notice of each meeting of the Board of Education shall be given by posting a copy of the notice on the message board in front, by the front entrance of the EJ McLendon Educational Center, 454 South Harvey, Plymouth, Michigan, at least 18 hours prior to the time of the meeting. The Executive Secretary to the Board of Education or other central office staff in his or her absence shall be appointed the designee for posting, posting notice of meetings. And then there's an opportunity for us to vote.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? All right, motion passes, six, zero.
It was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Christensen to direct the Secretary of the Board of Education to advertise laws 164.1 and 164.2 in the Plymouth Canton Observer newspapers. And then another vote.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Motion carries, six, zero. So next agenda topic is authorized signatures for the 2022-2023 school year. Is there a motion to approve the list of authorized signatures for school district business?
Mr. President, I move that we authorize the following signatures for school district business.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Member Chuksedu, do you mind reading?
Yes, actually, I'm not able to pull up that part of the agenda, so I'm going to read off of this. Oh, thank you. Mine is stuck on this one screen and I can't move it. Mine is doing the same thing. Pardon me? Mine is doing the same thing. Same thing, okay. Yeah.
It's authorized signatures, right, that part? It was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Chuksedu to authorize the following signatures for the school district business. Documents, administrator contracts, and that would be authorized by President, Secretary, or Superintendent. Teacher contracts, probationary or continuing tenure, that would be by President, Secretary, or Superintendent. Motor vehicle titles, that would be by Superintendent, Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Land contracts, and that would be by President, Secretary, or Superintendent. Deed of real estates, that would be by President, Secretary, or Superintendent. Leases and easements, and that would be by President, Secretary, Superintendent, or Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Deposit and investment, President, Treasurer, Superintendent Finance and, Chief Finance and Operations Officer, Director of Finance Accounting. Vendor contracts, that would be by Superintendent, Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes, six, zero. Next topic, next agenda topic is approval of naming depository investment of monies and naming signature for all funds. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. President, I move that we provide the naming of depository investment of monies and naming of signatories for all funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, will Member Christensen please read?
Can I borrow your?
We're all having technical.
I mean, I have issues, yeah. The link is only giving us the regular business agenda.
Yes.
Yesterday, I got the whole packet. Today, I'm only getting part of the packet.
That's what I have experienced.
I got the whole packet earlier today, but now it disappeared.
I downloaded the packet yesterday.
Okay, well, I will thank you for lending me the technology. I will read Member Keough's device. So it was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Christensen, that's the Treasurer and/or Chief Finance and Operations Officer, be authorized to deposit all monies for all funds of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools in the following banks. Comerica, Community Financial Credit Union, Fifth Third Bank, Flagstar Bank, JP Morgan Chase Bank, N.A., Michigan Liquid Asset Fund, PNC Bank and PNC Capital Markets LLC, Public Trust Advisors LLC. And further, to invest all monies of all funds of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools in investments authorized under section 1223 of the Michigan School Code of 1976 as amended. Yep. And further, that these banks be requested, authorized, and directed to honor checks, drafts, and other orders for the payment of money drawn in the name of Plymouth Canton Community Schools against the named funds when bearing facsimile signature of Treasurer Keough and the facsimile signature of the President Wilson. And further, that the Huntington National Bank, Bank of New York, and UMB Bank, N.A., be designated as the paying agents for bonds of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools as required. And further, a blanket position bond is required for all school districts employees, all school district employees, an amount of $100,000, and the cost of the bond be provided by the school district. And then we are asked to vote at this point.
Perfect. Any other discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
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 Say no? Motion passes, six, zero. Thank you. Next up is naming other specific counsel. Can I have a motion to approve naming of other specific general counsel? Or I'm sorry, general counsel?
Correct. Mr. President, I name, I, I move that we name the general counsel.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Great. Will Member McCoyn read?
If, pardon?
Would you mind reading? Yeah, I'll pass that.
It was moved by, I'm sorry, I didn't write this down as I tried to get this open. Who?
Keough.
Keough, and seconded by Member Chuksedu to appoint legal counsel for 2022-2023, Collins and Blaha Law Firm, PC, General Counsel.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no?
Your Vice President. I won't be late again.
I won't be late.
I'm sorry, I'll do that while we're tied. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, anyone, any opposed, say no. All right, motion passes, seven, zero. Next is naming other specific counsel. Can I have a motion to approve naming of other specific general counsel?
Mr. President, I move that we name other specific legal counsel as appointed by the Board of Education.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Brooks, would you mind reading?
Agenda was just refreshed, so you should have it on the link now, so. Yeah, it's working now.
Yeah, it came up.
Where is it? Right here.
There it is. Yeah.
Name and other. Right there.
Okay. It was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Brooks to appoint other specific legal counsel as appointed by the Board of Education for the 2022-2023 year. Clark Hill, PLC, Lacy &amp; Jones, LLP, La Pointe &amp; Associates, PC, Miller, Canfield, Paddock, and Stone, PLC, and Thron Law Firm, PC.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Motion carries, seven to zero. Next up, naming school district auditor. Is there a motion to authorize naming of school district auditor?
Mr. President, I move that we name school district auditor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Fantastic. Member Chastain, would you mind reading? Don't be straight into the fire.
We're on D. On page three.
Yep.
Who moved it?
I did.
It was moved by Member McCoyn and seconded by Member Brooks to appoint Plant Moran, LLC, Certified Appointed Accountant, as the school district's auditor for the 2022-2023 school year.
Fantastic, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Motion carries, seven, zero. Designate routine advertisement.
I think we have to, there's another item under school auditor. So I move that we, that we name the school district bond financial advisor for 2023.
Second.
All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no?
I think we have to read it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, so it was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Chastain to appoint Public Financial Inc., Public Financial Management, Inc., as the school district's bond financial advisor for 2022 and 2023.
All right, now, any further discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Passes, seven, zero. Motion passes, seven, zero. Now we're on to routine advertisement. All right. Can I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we designate the, the locations for the routine advertisements.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Member Keough, do you mind reading?
Not a problem. It was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member McCoyn that the Plymouth and Canton Observer, the Detroit Newspaper Agency, or the Michigan Chronicle Newspapers be designated for the following routine advertisements. A, Notice of Budget Hearing and Truth in Taxation Hearing. B, Invitation for Bids. C, Request for Proposals. And that the Plymouth Canton Observer, or the bond buyer, or the Detroit Legal News, as required, be designated for the publication of A, Call for Redemption of Bonds. B, Sale of Bonds. C, Sale of Tax Anticipation Notes. A, and that invitation for bids for major renovations, additions, and new construction under Public Act 232 of July 2000, July 21st, 2004, requires schools to post construction solicitations for a minimum of two weeks on the State of Michigan Sigma website.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I have a question. This is specific to new, like, print, or is this also online? It doesn't specify.
It, it's required to be in print still.
Only.
No, no, you could have it both, but we would have to have a print.
Print, okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, seven, zero. So I think that wraps up the organizational business. We are now going to move into the business meeting of the Board of Education. First item of the business is to adopt the agenda and consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve action item 230701, the adoption of the agenda, approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the, the agenda and approval of the consent agenda, action item 230701.
All right, is there a second? All right, Members Chuksedu seconded. Dr. Merritt, will you walk us through?
Yes, President Wilson, this evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. We are continuing our process of hiring champions this evening. We also have leaves, resignations, and retirements for your consideration. The approval of minutes from our regular meeting, that's on June the 28th, 2022, our special meeting minutes from June the 29th, 2022, and we have first reading of the following bylaws and policies. Bylaw 0100, definitions. Policy 8320, personnel files, and policy 8510, wellness.
Thank you. Any, any questions or discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Motion carries, seven, zero. Now we'll ask our new Chief HR Officer to walk us through new hires.
Good evening, all, and I'm at my first board meeting. I'm happy to be here.
So we're going to have the new hire introduce the new hire.
So tonight, we'd like to welcome Taylor. I'm going to mess it up again. Tiskowitz.
You got it.
There we go.
Taylor, would you stand up for us, please? I believe she has a proud uncle here at the table with us. Taylor comes to us with a BA from Grand Valley State University, a MA from Wayne State University, and she is certified in speech pathology. So she will be working at Gallimore and Farrand and will assist with speech correction. So welcome to Taylor. And just Taylor as a welcome gift to have a nice little candy bar for you.
Thank you.
There you go. Welcome.
Thank you.
Congrats. All right, and then we have Kathleen Grotes. Kathy, do you want to stand up? So Kathy is currently an employee with Plymouth Canton Schools. She works as an educational psychologist. She's been with us since 2003, but it looks like, looking at your resume, you also subbed with us at some point. So got a long history here. So this evening, Mrs. Grotes is here because she is taking on the role of mental health specialist and stepping aside from her educational psychologist role for a little bit, just taking a leave for it to get some professional growth. And so we're happy to have her in it. Just so we have her credentials here, she has her bachelor's from Madonna University. She has her master's from the University of, I'm sorry, University of Detroit Mercy, and she is pursuing her PhD with Capella University. So welcome. We're glad to keep you and have you in another role. And is there anything you'd just like to say to us this evening?
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm very passionate about mental health, and I'm looking forward to supporting our students and staff and families. So thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Congratulations. That concludes our list of new hires for this evening.
Fantastic, thank you. So on to board committee reports and action. First up, President's report. Since I've been president for six minutes now, I have no report. Just excited to jump in and work with you. Yeah, Member Keough.
I'm sorry, Ms. Langford, normally we also talk about the resignation, I'm sorry, the retirements. Did you want to cover those?
Sure. I have them here.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, I'm getting instructions from my, my person over here.
Not a problem. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Didn't know I was doing retirements. So we have Susan Heisman, who is a physical education teacher at TONDA, and she's retiring effective October 7th of this year. And then we have Barbara Kilgore, who I just met today, and she works in our wage and benefit account as a wage and benefit accounting coordinator, and she is retiring October 31st, 2022. So congratulations to them as well.
Thank you. All right, Members Chuksedu, SPA Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have not met since our last business meeting here, and we do have a meeting coming up on August 3rd at 5:00 PM in this room. I would welcome anyone that is interested in attending.
Thank you. Member McCoyn, Policy Committee.
The Policy Committee has also not met, and generally speaking, our next meeting should be, next month would be the second meeting of the School Board at 5:30. So that would be August 28th? No, that's not right. 23? August 23rd. At 5:30, we meet way down the end. If you follow this hallway, way to the end. If you get to Ms. Rail's office, you've gone a little too far, but everyone is welcome to join us.
Thank you, Member McCoyn. F and O with Member Keough.
So I was not here for the last F and O meeting. Perhaps Mr. Brooks or Ms. Christensen, either of you could just give a recap of?
We actually recapped the last meeting at our last board meeting, so we have not met since then.
Fantastic. And I'm sorry, I missed the last meeting, so that's perfect. So we have not had a F and O meeting since our last board meeting, and our next meeting is Thursday, August 4th. It's here in this room. It's at 5:00 PM, and the community is welcome to attend.
Fantastic. And then on to Student Voice and Action Committee. We actually just met yesterday and had a dynamic meeting. And as we all know, you know, working with students, we're trying to introduce them to real-world experiences. So at the very end of the meeting, I asked for some volunteers to actually come and present tonight to the board. So with less than 24 hours' notice, we have four students who volunteered to come and really give an update as to the work that they've been, 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 been doing in SVA over the last two months. And once again, just want to commend them. We gave them the option to take a break there in the summer and pick back up in the fall, but they chose to work through the summer, and they've, they've really leaned in all summer. So I thought it was appropriate that they come and share with you direct. So if you, all four of you can come to the mic, and I think Alex is going to kick us off. Just remember, give us your name, school, and maybe grade. That would be fantastic.
Do I have to push it, or is it just on?
Sorry. Hi, I'm Alexander Hawkins. I'm one of the student members of the Student Voice and Action Committee. And what I'm here to talk to you about with lovely Emma Jordan next to me is, we're both members of a subcommittee within the Student Action Committee that is in charge of the committee description for Student Voice and Action Committee. Committee description, it's basically just a summary of what the Student Voice and Action Committee will be, and kind of the overarching few sentences that wraps up is called the charge, and I'm going to go ahead and read that to you guys. The Student Voice and Action Committee is responsible for elevating student voice and providing students with the resources necessary to allow the implementation of meaningful and positive change in the PCCS school district through the Board of Education. And really, we really think that those few words really sum up what we want and what this committee should be, and some of our more specific goals, I'm going to go ahead and hand that off to Emma.
Hi, I'm Emma Jordan. I'm another one of the members of the subcommittee focusing on our committee description. The main goals that we have are to create a direct link between the school population of PSEP and PCCS as a whole, including all the way down to middle schools, directly to the, to as high as the School Board, because that Because that connection doesn't really exist. We find that it would be the best for us to create that connection so we can actually see all the work and change that we want to happen, happen. We want to put active implementation of these, of our student voice through the board. We want to provide students of all different backgrounds with the opportunity to access this new pipeline of information that we're creating. And promote equity and equality throughout PSAP as a whole through said student implementation. Next, I'm gonna pass it back off to Alex, and he's gonna go over the rest of our responsibilities for us.
The biggest responsibility for the Student Voice and Action Committee is that it is student-led. Because the purpose of this committee is that it, active implementation of student voice. And, and we can do that through reporting directly to the Board of Education and drawing from our own subgroups within the committee. And we will also be responsible for the creation of an annual budget and annual goals that we present to the Board of Education. And I think that pretty much wraps up. Emma, do you want to go ahead and introduce?
We're gonna pass it off to lovely Nyla.
Good evening, everybody. Can y'all, can you guys hear me? My name's Nyla Brown, and when we talk about the application process to be in SVA, we're really focusing on three main areas. Diversity, representation and the selection process. So when I say diversity, I mean that we want to incorporate all aspects of the student body so that we can mirror the PCCS community. We're also looking to include students who offer different perspectives on both sides of the continuum, whether it be extremely disengaged or extremely engaged. The second main area of focus, like I said, is representation. So we're looking at how SVA is represented. So when we talk about that, we say, within the 20 to 25 people that will be in SVA, there will be two co-chairs present to offer a student perspective at a board meeting as like an honorary board member, per se. But the last main area of focus, like I said, is the selection process. So it will include a mix of adults, whether it be board members, community members, or other adults in the community, and student input to make sure that we have that mix. There'll be different forms of submission. We'll have, we might have video or a voice recording, or even written response with a variety of different types of questions. So with that, I hand it over to Shravya.
Hi, I'm Shravya. I'm a new member of the SVA Planning Committee. So yesterday, we talked about specific requirements that we would like for our Student Voice and Action Committee Consultant. So to support our work, we want them to be able to use their past experiences, working with different students, as well as their financial literacy, to uplift and amplify student voices. They should also be able to understand the demographics and diversity of our unique student body and use leadership and advocacy skills to refine ideas made by the SVA Committee. We'd like them to attend meetings if possible and move our work forward by utilizing connections and proactivity.
Fantastic. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it, you guys. Does any other Board members have any questions for our SVA members?
I just look forward to collaborating with them and hearing the input that we have from that whole process. It's super exciting to see, and I'm especially pleased to see how quickly this has gotten moving.
They have been working, absolutely.
Thank you for all the hard work.
I don't have a question. I just always love it when students advocate for themselves and what they need, so I'm very excited.
I have a quick question. And I think you all said it, but I'm still catching up, I'm showing up a little bit late, so I apologize. I think you said it was gonna be a total number of maybe 25 total who will be on SVA, and that's representation from, like, hey, like, middle school through high school? Can you talk to me a little bit more about the composition of SVA?
The composition of SVA isn't, we don't have any set requirements necessarily yet, but we do encourage people from a background, well, not a background, who are anywhere from sixth all the way through 12th grade to be a part of our committee. We do have a slight flexibility in the, in the member numbers. We, we've just decided that around 24 is where it can be. But if we feel there are so many good candidates, we can go a little more. And if we feel we can work better with a closer-knit group, we can do a little bit less. But 25 is about where we wanted to sit.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
And they're, they're really mirroring the structure off of some of their other groups that they're a part of. So a lot of the work will be done in subgroups. You know, once the Student Voice Agenda is set, then they'll break into subgroups. That's where the bulk of the work will be done. And then, I want to make sure the Board did not miss Ms. Nyla's point of wanting a seat at the table. So they're looking at two co-chairs, which, which they would like to have a seat at, at this table to make sure that they have that direct link. So I did want to flag that, you guys could not sneak that through. Just wanted to make sure that. But I do want to thank Dr. Liz, well, that's what we call her at SVA. So thank you so much for, for all of your support and keeping everyone organized.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, guys. And with that, we will go on to Administrative Reports and Recommendations. First up is the Superintendent's Report.
All right, thank you very much. I never miss an opportunity to brag about this amazing district. I'm gonna start off bragging about our treasure trove of talent in our PCEA, our teachers. They're fabulous, but in particular tonight, I just want to highlight Mr. James Gell. He is a high school teacher. He's a physics teacher at Plymouth High School. Always a champion for students. He has the reputation during his time at PCEP as an educator dedicated to sharing his love of science with his students. And his efforts to provide an outstanding education to our PCEP students were recognized recently when Michigan State University selected Mr. Gell as a PhysTech Local Teacher of the Year. PhysTech is an association dedicated to eliminating the shortage of qualified physics teachers nationwide, and it sponsors this award as a way to spotlight the work of teachers whose contributions to physics education are significant and impactful on the students, colleagues and on their school district. So please join me in congratulating Mr. Gell. When we think about summer and school being out, school is never out, learning continues in PCCS. So I also want to highlight our summer programming, what's taking place in our buildings this summer. We have 789 students currently enrolled in our Summer Academy. We have both hybrid and face-to-face options this year. Our programs are giving students the opportunities to recover credits that they were not successful in during the school year. And for incoming freshman class, for example, they have an opportunity to take courses before they even enter high school. So they're getting ahead of that required coursework over the summer and being really motivated in that area. In addition to academic skills, we also offer support for students in SEL. Simultaneously, we're running our summer camps. We bragged about those last year, and I continue to highlight and thank Ms. Rail for her leadership in this area and really bringing innovation and passion one from our teachers, giving them opportunities to offer and teach things that they're passionate about and have some creativity. And to our students who are jumping in and loving learning. And as we saw last summer, some of those opportunities are really leading over to potential courses to add to, to our selection for the school year. So we currently have 260 students enrolled, grade one through eight. They've been engaged in STEM activities, as you can see there. They're project-based. Again, the teachers are really passionate about the content that they're teaching and the students are enjoying this experience. We also have talked for the last few years about the Greatness Camp that is also occurring this summer. We have 31 scholars enrolled in the Greatness Camp program at the high school. And remember that this program introduces students to the college admission process. They explore financial literacy, research scholarship opportunities. They're developing social justice and community service projects. Just really an exciting opportunity and strong connections for kids, exploring opportunities to help them be successful for the world beyond PCEP. I want to invite all Board members, if anyone is interested in visiting our summer programs, just let us know and we'll get you over there to just spend some time. It will definitely fill your cup, just having students share their experiences with me. So please, let me know if you'd be interested in going to the summer program. Also, want to continue to thank our community. With just a quick bond update, we have to continue to support, embrace and celebrate the fact that our community got behind a $275 million bond for our school district that is really allowing us, through a lens of equity, to give every student what they need in our facilities to be successful and for us to be recognized as one of our pillars, nationally recognized as innovators. And this summer, we are on schedule in our bond projects in both Byrd, Smith and Miller Schools. So they're getting the additions of rooms, getting playgrounds, getting furniture, we're getting signage, so that we have some uniformity across the district. So as you see construction going on, if you stop around and make sure you have a hard hat, let us know. But just welcome you to, not on the mud, but get out there and maybe take a look at what's going on. So those are on time right now, on schedule. We also are continuing our work at the Salem Auditorium. We know that that is a big project that is taking a lot of time. So we're continuing to work through that. And also, the beginning of the Plymouth Nanatorium is taking place right now. So a lot of construction at the park. I think Vice President Chastain experienced some of the construction of the parking lot. So we're working through those logistics as parking lots are getting crowded, but we'll work through those this summer. Again, invite you to take a look at all of these properties. And again, thanking our community for getting behind what is best for our students here in PCCS. And thank you, Ms. Pies, for your leadership and keeping everyone on track. The accountability matters in this space, and we appreciate your work on there. Finally, just want to give a Transportation Opt-In Program reminder and just an update here. As you know, this year, we are striving for some efficiencies within our transportation program. So we're taking an opportunity to do an opt-in where we're asking every family that is eligible to ride the bus to complete an opt-in form to say whether or not they're utilizing transportation services. Our partners at Durham really brought forth this idea for us, really to help increase or improve that experience for families. They said the first year in this program, typically, they get about 60% of families that respond. So we give some grace, we want to make sure that we are guaranteeing that everyone will have a ride. I'm proud to say, with one, well, four days left for this application process, we already have 62% of our families that have completed this process. We have multiple methods for communicating with the families that have yet to complete them. They will have individual text messages, phone calls, email communications. So just working daily to ensure that all families have an opportunity and a reminder to complete this process. New families, it's going to be an automatic default to a yes. So if they're coming in late to the school year and registering, that's not a concern. And again, as we look at years and getting families educated about the process and accustomed to the process, we anticipate that we'll have more participation. But again, I'm looking forward to the next four days. If we're already at 62%, I think it's looking pretty good in terms of the response rate to that. If you have any questions about transportation or needs of lists of contacts, please visit www.pccsk12.com and search transportation in the top right search engine. I also want to do two important reminders. All special education transportation services are handled through the IEP process, so that will continue to be a separate process as it has been in the past. And any changes in transportation status may be made at any time. However, it may take up to 48 hours for your student's bus stop to be updated and for transportation to begin. So although you may opt into one form and make a decision later, you have that opportunity at all times to make that decision. So at that point, I will end for today, so we can get about the business of Finance and Operations.
Fantastic, thank you. Are there any questions for Superintendent Merritt?
I have a question. This is specific to transportation, and just forgive me, but I don't think it was clear, and I had a few parents ask me specifically about transportation. So some of our families have two locations for, you know, two addresses where they use for pickup or drop-off. And was that impacted by this new process? Do families have to choose a single location, or they, can they still continue to have multiple? Okay, just want to be, have that publicly stated and on the record.
That's very good, and we may just add a bullet that would be helpful, just to our website posting that just said nothing else changes. So whatever is our procedure for transportation continues.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, any other questions? Well, congratulations, a lot of great work. You had me at construction on time, which is rare right now, so.
Yes, good point.
Nice work. Finance and Operations, so we have three action items. All three are final readings. We've, we've gone through these before. First up is Action Item 230702, Consider Approval of Resolution for a Radio Station Automation Contract. Final re-reading, is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for a radio station automation contract, final reading, Action Item Number 23-07-02.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions or questions? Once again, we went through this, but just in case. All right, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? All right, Motion carries seven zero. Is there a motion for Action Item 230703? Consider Approval of Resolution for Bid Package EL2, Electronic Building Signed Purchase, Final Reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for Bid Package Number EL2, Electronic Building Signed Purchase, Final Reading, Action Item Number 23-07-03.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Motion carries seven zero. And then finally, is there a motion for Action Item 230704? Consider Approval of Resolution for District-Wide Waste Disposal and Recycling Contract, Final Reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for a District-Wide Waste Disposal and Recycling Contract, Final Reading, Action Item Number 23-07-04.
Second.
Any discussion?
So I did see the packet here, and I wondered, there's been a lot of questions that we've had in the community about our recycling processes. And I didn't see, I don't have the context of the presentation that happened at the last board meeting. Can someone perhaps give us some context around that? And are, are we doing anything to expand the use of recycling?
So currently, we are awarding a contract for this service to Republic Services for just the recycling of cardboard. Mr. Grzinski is here to talk about the recycling program and the expansion thereof, but typically, I'll just say in general, it costs more money than it garners for the recycling program, but Mr. Grzinski has more details than I.
Sure, so we, we kept with the basic format that the district has been following. We are investigating other recycling streams and whether we can become part of, become part of those at a reasonable cost. We also, just as a note, we do universally, universal recycle, universal waste recycling as a normal course of business, light bulbs, ballasts, all of those sort of Sharps containers. Those are all done sort of behind the scenes. But as of right now, expanding the recycling program to include other waste streams is prohibitively expensive. And I do have some, a representative here from Republic Waste, if there's specific questions.
Yeah, I'd love to, I mean, not now, perhaps in board notes, if I'd love to get the details on what prohibitively expensive means. And based upon material types. Because I know that a lot of the recycling markets have dried up with, with the changes in China. But certain materials like metals and paper, still from what I'm aware of, have a strong commercial opportunity for recycling. And I'd love to understand more about what those costs are by material type, so we can understand that.
We do have paper recycling dumpsters on site, each of the schools, that the neighborhoods can use. And, and those are emptied and the paper waste tonnage, we get a small amount back that's distributed to the schools.
Right, but it just sounds like we're not using those ourselves.
We are using them ourselves for paper and such.
Okay, you, you mentioned cardboard, you didn't say paper.
So on, yeah, cardboard is a separate entity that came to the district some time ago to place dumpsters to collect paper from the community. And then we get a small amount of money back on the tonnage that we receive. This specific, part of this bid is specifically for cardboard recycling from packaging, waste, food packaging, et cetera, you know, supply packaging, et cetera.
Okay, so I'll, I'll follow up in subsequent F and O meetings, and if you can give us me details on what that expense means. Because in some cases, it may be better for the environment, depending on what prohibitively means. I don't know whether prohibitively means a dollar or a million dollars. I assume it's someplace in between.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any further questions? All right, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Motion passes seven zero. All right, so now we are on to Citizens Comments. I don't believe we have any Citizens Comments.
There's none in the box.
None in the box, all right. So then on to Discussion. First piece of Discussion is the Future Agenda Topics.
Mr. President, I would like to suggest a, an agenda item to be added to our August meeting, and that would be around the Superintendent Evaluation Tool. We've had some discussions about looking at other Superintendent Evaluation Tools that are in alignment with our board work. And as we look to establishing new Superintendent Goals, I'd like for us to discuss Superintendent Evaluation Tools that are in alignment to support those goals. And I And I shared some resources with Member McCoy, who was President McCoy at that time. She had shared those resources with the entire board for review. I'd like to bring that up for a public discussion at the August Board Meeting, and I'm hoping between now and then, people will have reviewed it, so we can have an open dialogue about it.
Perfect. Yep, we've talked about this numerous times, so definitely in support of that. We'll add that to the August meeting agenda. Are there other future agenda topics?
Mr. President, I'm not sure if this is an agenda topic, so if it is not, I apologize. But after we completed the work of the Dynamic Plan, and it was a lot of work that went into that, as a board and as a team of eight, we talked about holding community forums, and we started that work around the Dynamic Plan and sharing aspects of that Dynamic Plan with our community. And I just don't want it to get lost, and so we technically have about three more that we want to do in the community in the spirit of transparency and how we're going to do the work. And I'd like to bring that back up as a matter of not discussion, but also planning to make sure that we follow through on what we said we would do.
Can I add to that conversation? Thank you, Vice President Chastain. If we could add that as an item during our Board Governance Workshop to get dates, so we don't lose track of what Member Chastain just said, if we get the dates on the books now, and then we can start looking at who's available for those dates, and then have agenda topics for the three or four sessions that are left for the remainder of school year, actually, the new school year.
So Board Governance Workshop that we're doing July 26th with Karen Cross, correct?
Correct.
So remind me, I know you led the first one, the first community forum you planned.
We led, the three of us.
Oh, yeah. The three of us, that's right. The three of us led that. Did we identify the next person?
I think Laurent, I'm sorry.
We were approached at one point to potentially, we, Patrick and myself, but I don't know that there's been much movement on scheduling that and what that topic would be.
We need to do that.
Right. I also made a suggestion, I had a conversation with Ms. Cross this afternoon along the same line, so I'm completely in agreement with both of your suggestions about getting those on the calendar and holding us accountable to those.
So maybe we do both, where one, we put it on the agenda for our time with Karen Cross, and then also, if, you know, Member Kehoe and Christensen want to connect on some dates before the 26th and bring potential dates, that way we have at least the next one scheduled right away, and then we can put the next, you know, text, the next two.
Fair enough, sure.
Who would like to lead the second one? So, or I guess it would be the third one technically. Is there?
Remember the topics, because we were doing them by sort of those pillars.
So one of the ideas was to have the partnerships and community engagement, and we were kind of holding off on that until the fall because Dr. Martini and Gibbs
Right, that's right.
could then talk about her department that she's just got going.
Okay, okay. So that does sound like a solid plan. At least we'll have the next one hopefully by the 26th, and then we can talk about additional dates and topics, so.
And I understand the process is that now that there's a new president, we're starting a new school year, you'll go through this calendar and propose?
Yes.
Because I see that there's a few topics that we had talked about that we wanted to get scheduled, but the schedule actually ends at this, or, I'm sorry, ends with our meeting with Karen Cross on the 26th.
Yes.
As a part of that workshop, we'll share the new calendar with the new dates that you approved this evening. My core team has already plugged in the dates that happened in the presentation, and then we'll have a discussion that will allow board to talk about ideas that they want to see for presentations as they relate to the Dynamic Plan, so we'll try to work to build out that on the 26th.
Perfect, thank you.
The email with the information on the Superintendent Evaluation Tools, I sent that July 6th, in case anybody, it's helpful to look in your email if you have a date.
Thank you.
That's right, that's right. I found all those emails on Sunday.
So one of the things that I want to flag for the board, you know, one of the things I think, and we've talked about this at different times, is I think a lot of times, it's easier to react than to create. And so one of the things I'd like to do as president and with the leadership is start to take a more proactive approach of bringing to the board kind of a concept, right? And so even when you think about things like calendars for the year, things of that nature, I'd like to work with, you know, the other officers and Dr. Merritt to bring a concept, if you will, to the board for the board to react. So I think in the past, a lot of times, we've kind of created together from scratch, and I think that that takes a lot of time, and it can slow the process of actually getting things accomplished. And so one of the things I'd like to signal and see if there's any pushback is to, how do we, you know, start to bring pies, you know, somewhat baked to the table so that everyone still has full input? Anything can change within that dynamic, but we're further along in the process, and we can get more accomplished in a period of time. So once again, it shouldn't, it won't dilute board voice, it won't dilute input and feedback, but hopefully what it'll do is start to accelerate the amount of work that we can accomplish. Is there any pushback?
I have a question, I just have a question. When you say you're going to bring something, like, where are you going to get these?
Yeah, so for instance, Dr. Merritt talked about the calendar that we would bring forward. I'd want to meet with her in advance, myself, Vice President Chastain, to kind of review in advance, start to look at the Dynamic Plan, look at some other things, because part of, you know, as I mentioned, my desire to run as president is to look at, how do we elevate the most important work of the board to the top of the pile, right? How do we elevate that work so that we can get that done, make sure that we're streamlining that work? Because at the end of the day, we all have limited time, and the question is, what's the most important work that we have to focus on? And I think getting the body to that is critical, and it allows us to move forward quicker as a body.
I just want to test my understanding of this. This would be not something that just the president and the vice president would do, but something you'd like all the board members to be able to do.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So for example, on one of the topics we have was a discussion around athletic and activities funding. There could be a few board members that might have a conversation with the administration about what we want to see in that presentation, rather than just waiting until the presentation is coming forward.
Absolutely, yep, absolutely.
Okay, and so obviously, this is, I think that has the potential to really accelerate the process, but it also has the potential to create some fragmentation, and it also has the potential to violate the Open Meetings Act. You know, one of the things that we do is we make sure that these conversations are had in public when we have these deep conversations. So if we're going to have these smaller conversations and trying to bring things that are a little bit more par-baked, maybe not fully baked, but partially done, then we need to make sure that we honor both the spirit and the intent and the terms of the Open Meetings Act, that there should not be more than three board members that are collaborating on that, and we shouldn't be, you know, round-robin-ing around as part of that activity. So it is, it is something we have to make sure that we're very conscious of in that process, that this is not an opportunity for us to make decisions behind closed doors that then come forward, but instead, an opportunity for us to try to accelerate and to make it so that the materials that we are bringing forward is more closely aligned to those people that maybe have a particularly strong interest in a topic area.
Yeah, and I want to be crystal clear, so any time I bring any recommendation to the board, it's always going to fall first and foremost in line with the Open Meetings Act, things of that nature, so 1,000%. And also, I see this more as not so much a small group doing the work, but it's more of the leadership taking more of a strategic focus on it, right? So once again, if you look at the calendar, what are we looking to focus on for the end of, so I'll give you a great example. We've been trying to, and for various reasons, right, and this is no, you know, no, you know, no slant on the board as a whole, right? But things like board goals, you know, is something that I think is so critical, because we have to get to board goals really quickly right now, right? Because this is the start of the school year, we can't get to board goals by October, November, December, because by that point, half the school year is over, and then it becomes obsolete. How we track ourselves, how do we actually measure ourselves, how do we evaluate ourselves on the work that we're doing? So things like board goals, if you're bringing, you know, if you're bringing a concept, meaning this is what we've heard over the last couple of years as a board, this is what we've heard is a priority, closing the gap, equity, et cetera, et cetera, this is what we've heard as far as board goes. And then you open it up to the full board for feedback. They can add, they can delete, they can, as a body, right? So the work isn't actually being done, but the structure and doing some of the pre-work to get to the end goal quicker is really what I'm signaling, right? And once again, I want to be transparent, because I think a lot of these, even more of these conversations should be held in full-blown board meetings, open to the community. I think we all agree with that, right? But we have to get to that point, and I just, I think sometimes we build by committee, just the infrastructure, just the template to even get us there. And so maybe if we can do a little bit more of that structural work on the backend, it would help us to get to the meat of what we're trying to accomplish. Does that make sense?
It does to me. The one other caution that I would have is that we already have some committees where there's work that is really well-aligned to those topic areas, and we wouldn't want this type of activity to be usurping those committees.
Absolutely.
So those committees, if you're talking about something that would belong in policy or belong in Finance and Operations, or SPA, or Student Voice, those committees should be the things that are driving those topics. But some of the examples that you gave, like, you know, board goals is obviously something that isn't necessarily in any specific committee, so that makes sense.
Absolutely.
So I just want us to be conscious of that, that we're not trying to usurp the committees by non-members.
Absolutely. Yeah, and once again, to be clear, I think your red flags are spot-on, because at the end of the day, we shouldn't be, there shouldn't be a small group that's taking out more work. The whole structure of this is to, you know, to be able to spread the work so that more work gets done, but I think there's some key things that we can kind of accelerate. So I just wanted to signal it, you know, as we do it, I'll be transparent to say, hey, this is what we're doing, and then if at any point anyone feels, you know, like we're overstepping boundaries or whatever the case is, just, you know, just holler and say, Sean, can you give us more clarity on that?
And I think at the Board Governance Meeting would be a great time for us to go deeper in this process.
Absolutely, absolutely. Perfect. All right, are there any other future agenda topics?
I would like to say that, and I don't think that we need to be, Karen Cross has already been working on board governance, our next meeting, so I don't know that we want to like try to change what she's already worked on at this point.
Fair enough.
Yeah, agreed.
And we've done a good job of doing that in the past, so let's, if we need to have a subsequent meeting with Ms. Cross, then we can do that, or another special meeting.
That's right.
All right, so we have two future special board meetings coming up, July 20th, which is a closed-door session to discuss security, and then July 26th, as we've discussed numerous times with Karen Cross. Any other future special board meetings?
The 20th will start off in the Media Center at Plymouth High School, and then move into the building next door.
And what door would we go in?
The main, door one, door number one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President, unfortunately, I've been called out of town for a meeting that I am not able to reschedule, so I will miss tomorrow's meeting.
Understood. Not a problem. All right, anything else on future special board meetings? All right, and then for follow-up board questions, one thing I'd like to ask Members to do, to do as secretary, is to, at the board meetings, because we traditionally, I was talking with Member McCoy, we always go back to follow-up board questions based off of the meeting minutes, and so as secretary, is that something that, as we get to this each meeting, you can just refresh our memory as far as what the questions were, and then we can track whether they're answered or not, or pending?
Yes, definitely, and I will lean on Dr. Merritt to always be that verifier of information and the most up-to-date information, so we can do that in partnership.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Perfect. So the two questions, keep me true on this, from last time, was Members to Do asked for an update on administrative guidelines.
Yes. So we provided those in the July 15th board note. I think we got more than what you were initially asking for, but I think that's a good start, as we've talked about in policy, is really kind of doing an audit of all of our policies, procedures, and look to say, what do we need to elevate as it relates to the Dynamic Plan so we can really kind of structure the policy meetings, so we can really get some of those policies outlined? So you were looking for one, and we gave you the full.
I love it.
Thank you, Mr. Citizens, for that.
That's very thorough, thank you for that.
To be helpful for our work.
I think it's helpful for, as President Wilson was saying, you know, let's be proactive, so looking at that entire document and really targeting the most important work as a board and seeing where do we want to put our efforts moving forward at the Policy Committee collectively. So thank you for that spreadsheet, and I also want to thank you for the K-12 Insight Breakdown Reports. That was helpful. And of course, I hope that we revisit that data as a team of eight and go deeper into that discussion.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. All right, is there any other business? All right, with that, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
You don't need a motion.
I don't need a motion to adjourn? I was on a roll. All right, so we are adjourned at 8:06.
I think it's a record.
President Wilson, good job.